Okay, you're live.
I'd like to call this meeting in order, please, will we please stand and rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. McCausland, would you do a roll call, please?
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Fays. Mr. Grisbeck.
Here.
Mrs. Hoppy. Mrs. Janasik.
Here.
Mr. McGregor.
Here.
Mr. Modrak.
Here.
Mr. Scalzo.
Here.
Mrs. Turner.
Here.
All nine members present.
Thank you, very good. At this time, we will proceed with the meeting with a temporary president of a president pro temp. At this time, Mr. Christensen, will you please take that?
Yeah.
Should we do the oath of office first?
If you do, let's do the oath of office and then that permit. Sorry, if we do oath of office first, if you're comfortable doing that.
Okay, sorry about that.
That'll permit everybody to be able to vote on it.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, at this time then, we'll go back to the reading certificates and oath of office, Ms. Thundell.
All right, thank you, Mr. Modrak. I have here from County Allegheny, the Board of Elections, four certificates of election, and so I will read those. I'm going to list the names of the newly elected board members, and I welcome all of you to your first board meeting. We, the undersigned, constituting the return board of the County of Allegheny, do hereby certify that at the election held on the second day of November 2021, the following individuals were named as school directors in Bethel Park. Buffy Fays, Dan Grisbeck, Gail Hoppy, and Sharon Janasik. And these were signed on November 22nd, 2021. So with that, that completes reading of the oath of, the certificates of election.
Excellent. At this time, we'll take the oath of office. With us tonight is the Honorable Judge Ron Ornone assisting with us. So I guess at this time, we'll have all the four new elected members come out to the center. And with Dr. Walsh. No, no, not.
Come on, dude, you were given a lot of responsibility this time.
I know. Keep the time.
So while everybody's getting lined up, I do want to say thank you for the honor bestowed to swear the new members in. You are entrusted with a high duty, the duty to represent our community, our kids, and the district. Certainly, I think the order first and foremost should be the kids. So with that, I congratulate all of you, welcome to your service to our community. And I certainly believe we already have a wonderful school board, and you all are going to add to that. So let's get this on. If you all don't mind, at some point, when I'm swearing you in, I would ask to remove the masks just because I like to see the I do, to make sure you understand what you are pledging to in the oath. So with that, let's go ahead and remove our masks real quick. And when I say aye, if you would state your name, and then continue then to repeat after me, please. Aye?
Aye.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution and laws of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The laws and ordinances of the municipality of Bethel Park.
The laws and ordinances of the municipality of Bethel Park.
And all the rules and regulations pertaining to and governing the school district of Bethel Park.
And all the rules and regulations.
Pertaining to the school district of Bethel Park. As a director.
As a director.
I will well and faithfully.
I will faithfully.
Discharge and perform.
Discharge and perform.
All the duties of my position.
All the duties of my position.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
According to the best of my knowledge and abilities.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I do.
I do.
Thank you, and congratulations. So we can go ahead and put our masks back on, and we can, there are actually a series of three oaths of office. One will be yours, that we'll put in this lovely clear coated jacket for you to keep forever. One will be for my records, and then one I will give to the superintendent for the district's records. Okay, so if you guys all would come up and sign it. For each of you. Maybe face one. I'll sign it. It'll be.
They gotta be blue guys.
Do I have this?
Some judge or an attorney has.
All right, so wait. Right here. Okay. Someone will second, and then I. Are you sticking around after?
Yes. I'm going to try.
Okay. 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 All right. What's that? Who's that?
I'm going to go see Dana, her grades tanked this week again. My dad's a con artist. No, and very, 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 very no. When they said what they wanted, if they, if they couldn't guarantee that dialysis was required and what they wanted to do, we were like, oh my God, we can't do that. These are encouraged now just to get a leg drawn. So. Where's the app? Paramount? Right across from Lowe's? Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Probably not far from where you live. It isn't. They do, and we have their own in-house office, and I talked to Tim Campbell about it.
Oh, really?
Darren looked this up, and when I said that was probably the route we were going, and Tim has been fantastic. He sits on the municipal board hearing, was a school member years ago. So he, um, he did, you know, a really good job, and he, my mom was in the car, so he really walked us through the process, and.
Yeah.
We don't want to ask him in depth. And I go talk to her, and I said, yeah, and Darren said, I'll use. Because I take it standalone, she was going to put her info down. Darren said, I'll talk to her, and he's like, my girlfriend.
Yeah.
She said, I used to park the bikes until we were old enough and everything, so she was willing to talk to him.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And then I said, Jack's grades tanked this week, too. He went reading 100 words, and it's a 75, so. I know, so I just said, I'm more worried now about them than their.
That's good.
That'll be fine.
All right, Ron, take care, see you.
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you, Judge.
I had your folks in court all day, all morning, all afternoon, both independent and the high school. I got to tell you, the districts and such took me there, they do one, one thing. And the principals, the staff, all the new people that have been brought on, it's really, really excellent, so, thank you, Mike.
Good, thank you, Judge.
Thank you. Thank you.
At this time, we'll have a president pro temp to temporarily take over, continue with the meeting. Mr. Christensen, would you please take it?
So I nominate Jim Modrak as president pro temp.
Second. Are there any other nominees for president pro temp? Okay. At this time, the board can take a motion that Jim Modrak be elected temporary president of the reorganization meeting. So we need a motion in a second.
Oh, sorry. I move to elect Jim Modrak as president pro temp. Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay. All right, thank you. At this time, we will take on nominations for school board president.
Mr. Modrak, just circle back. Intent to adopt agenda for business items.
I'm sorry, yes, we are, we gotta do that. At this point in time, we'll attempt to adopt the business items for this meeting tonight.
I move to adopt the business items for tonight's meeting.
Second.
At this point, we have a first and a second for agenda items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So the agenda is passed, which will then consist of opening nominations for president. At this time, is anybody nominating anybody for the school board president for Bethel Park School District?
Yes, I nominate Barry Christensen as president of the Board of School Directors.
Okay.
Second.
Is there any other nominations at this time?
Okay.
I'm sorry, who made the second, I didn't catch it.
Mr. Grisbeck.
Does that require a second?
Yeah, just a reminder, nominations do not require a second. These, these meetings are goofy in some ways, and they only happen once a year, so. So nominations don't require a second, but you do need to take Mr. Modrak a motion to close nominations.
So at this point in time, and since there are no other nominations, I'll take a motion to close.
I move to close the nominations for president of the school board.
And we have a second.
I second.
At this time, the nominations for president are closed.
All those in favor.
Aye.
So by that, Mr. Barry Christensen is now our new school board director, president. So then we, okay, sorry, at this point in time, then, we may have a vote as Mr. Christensen as the school board president for Bethel Park School District. Do we have a nomination?
Aye.
And it's just a vote, right?
Yeah, and we have a second to. It's a second to vote, I thought I heard. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion made on the floor by Mr. Scalzo, second by Mr. Grisbeck for Mr. Christensen as board president. We'll do a voice vote at this point in time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Okay.
The ayes have it. Next on the agenda will be nomination for vice president for the school board. Do we have any nominations at this time?
Yes, I, I would like to nominate Kim Walsh Turner as vice president of the Board of School Directors.
We have a nomination of Ms. Turner as a vice president of school board directors. Are there any other nominations at this time? With that being said, then, do we have a motion to close the nomination?
Yes, I move that the nominations be closed, and the secretary be instructed to cast a unanimous ballot for the election of Kimberly Walsh Turner as vice president of the Board of School Directors.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second for Ms. Hoppy, thank you. At this time, we have a nomination for Ms. Turner as vice president, and it was second. We will then cast a vote for her as vice president of the school board directors. We'll do a voice vote again also. All in favor as Ms. Turner as vice president, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Vote nine zero. So at this point in time, Mr. Christensen and Ms. Turner will take their seats as president and vice president.
Thank you. Lucky for you, I didn't prepare a speech, but I do want to thank you for your confidence in appointing me as a school board president for this next year, so thank you. Any speech from you?
No, I just want to thank everyone for, again, your confidence in leadership as vice president for the next year. Thank you.
So the next item on the agenda is the, under the Finance Committee, the approval of the reappointment of the Bethel Park School District Solicitor. And I'll make the motion, there'll be a second, and then we can have discussion. So I move to approve the reappointment of the Bethel Park School District Solicitor, which is Weiss Burkhart Kramer LLC.
Second.
Second.
I was, it's my name on the agenda. Yeah. Okay, any discussion, any questions? Okay.
We have appreciated being able to work with Bethel Park since February of 2020. This simply is, you know, a small increase in our hourly rate, which is already very low compared to other attorneys in the region, but we've, we've been honored to work with you and look forward to continue working with you.
May I say, your, Amy and her law firm have provided great guidance to us, and through these last two years, there's no reason why we would not continue with, with her law firm as our solicitor. So thank you for you and your law firm.
Yeah, it's been a great relationship, so thank you. So.
You just need to take a voice vote again.
Take a voice vote for the approval of the reappointment of the Bethel Park School District Solicitor. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. In the area of other, we have three items on the agenda. Who wants to take that? Ms. Turner, do you want to take that?
Yeah, I can take that. Number one is the naming of newspapers for advertising. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the following Allegheny County newspapers as mandated in Bethel Park School District Policy 06. The Pittsburgh Post Gazette, The Observer Reporter, and The Almanac.
Any questions on those items?
Individually on each of these?
I think we can handle those all together.
Okay.
Any questions or discussion? Okay, see none, let's take a vote.
I need a second.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
It's okay.
Okay, motion was made by Ms. Turner, and seconded by.
Mr. Scalzo.
Ms. Scalzo. With no further discussion, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Okay.
You ready for me to move on? Okay, next up is the notice of monthly board meetings. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to adopt the January 2022 through December 22 meeting dates. You need a second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was proposed by Ms. Turner, seconded by Mr. Scalzo. Are there any discussions on this? None? Let's take a voice vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion passes.
And then finally, the appointment of representatives to the following organizations. Special Assignments Pathfinder, Steel Center for Career and Technical Education, Shazda, PSBA, Liaisons for the Municipal Council, Parks and Recreation and Leisure, and PTOPTA. And I believe there were others.
Yeah. I guess what we can do, I didn't realize this was on the agenda, I'm sorry, but we can.
Mr. Christensen, so the committees, typically the president can appoint standing committee members, so that's not something that needs to be voted on, but the board, and these don't have to be voice voted, they don't have to be voted, we just need to know who will be representing the district on these committees.
Sure.
In fact, there's a Steel Center meeting coming up very soon, Shazda, in fact, next Thursday, so these things are happening quickly. We wanted to put it on the agenda tonight for some discussion, so that the administration would know who would be representing the district and would be getting this correspondence when it arrives.
So do we have some discussion now around appointing those people? Okay.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, I was wondering, I was thinking that we might do that at the board comments section, but if we want to do it here as part of the agenda, fantastic.
Well, but there are, there were three other committees that we knew about. Are we just going to appoint those, or are we going to discuss those in this, too? I just want to make sure that whatever motion we make, we are inclusive. Oh, they don't, okay.
Oh, so this is really just discussion, really, it's not a, it's not a, okay.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Christensen.
For type discussion, yeah, sorry.
If it's possible, I've sat in a couple Pathfinder meetings already, and if it's no objections, I would like to maintain and continue that into the next full year, or next calendar year, for Pathfinder.
Anybody else have a strong desire to participate in Pathfinder? Well, I will say, a lot of times we think about Pathfinder as, you know, being involved in the, you know, the special education curriculum. This committee is really about the facilities, okay, and, you know, the investments that we're making in supporting the Pathfinder School in their facilities, investments, and operating costs.
Would it be appropriate to have an alternate, so that Mr. Modrak wasn't able to attend the board meeting at Pathfinder? Someone could, would know who to attend in his absence.
And that would be good, because that's what Mr. McGregor and I did this year, is shared. Is anybody interested in being the alternate? Buffy?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's take a look at Steel Center. So Steel Center is a vocational program where we send students in the afternoon, I think it's normally. Is there an interest?
I have an interest, oh, sorry.
After you, Gail.
I'm very interested in the Steel Center. My husband's in the trades, and it just sounds like a good fit for me.
Okay. Yep, I was a former manager for electricians, mechanics, so I'd be happy to be Gail's backup if we need one.
Good.
Thanks, Dan.
Okay. Just make a note. Shazda, so that's the, what does the abbreviation stand for?
South Hills Area School District's Association. And the Shazda organization has sort of subcommittees that meet regularly. Board members typically meet once or twice a year. Superintendents meet once a month, and then their other committees, principals meet, and so forth. The, because of the pandemic, there hasn't been a Shazda meeting in quite some time, so we're actually back on track to have one next Thursday night. So whoever's representing Bethel Park will have the first meeting of probably the last 18 months.
Okay. I would, I would be interested in Shazda, just being an educator. It would be nice to maybe connect with some of the other school districts in the South Hills, so I would love the opportunity.
And I'm willing to back up Mr. Scalzo as the alternate.
Perfect. You know, previously, Mrs. Rule was on four committees, I think, I mean, she did, she.
She did all four.
Took a lot of the, the evening work off of the board. She did a fantastic job, she's very involved in that, and so we're kind of going through the process of spreading out the work a little bit more, but. PSBA, so that's the Pennsylvania School Board Association, that was another one that Mrs. Rule was.
I'd be very interested in that.
Okay. Did you want to be interested in that?
No, I was just going to say, I was her backup, so I can do that.
Okay.
I was always Connie's backup.
Okay. I'm glad we got the backups going here. Unincipal Council.
I think I, I do believe my husband would be, is considering being the liaison to us.
You don't even have to go to the meetings, huh?
It's at the dinner table.
It sort of seems like a built-in solution.
Yeah. I can back you up on that also, if you, but there probably won't be much of a need.
They don't, the liaison doesn't necessarily go to all the council meetings, correct?
Correct.
They just work together. I think we can manage to work together once in a while, it should be okay.
So we also have the rec board?
I'm interested in that one.
Are you?
Yeah.
What are you doing tomorrow night?
Yeah, it's tomorrow night.
There, apparently.
Okay.
And they've been doing it by, did we stop the Zoom? Because the last one I was on.
No, it's in person, yeah. I'll get you info on it.
Then we had the Shade Tree Commission also, so Mrs. Dobus did the rec board and the Shade Tree Commission. Is Shade Tree Commission still active?
I'm, I'm not sure. I didn't have that one on my list.
Okay, maybe we'll just leave that as a question mark right now until. Mrs. Dobus had also had a list. We, we have a certain number of committees, and we'll talk about those next that are.
We forgot one, PTOPTA, and I was going to take that, because I was Pam's backup for that.
Long list that got hidden here, okay, yes.
I can back you up, Kim.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I'll, with that in mind, I'll take care, I'll be the alternate to that.
So we had another committee, the Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee, now I.
Correct, I have two more on my list that aren't on the agenda, was Wellness and DEI.
Okay.
I'm interested in DE and I.
Yes, and if we need a second, I would be happy to be on that as well.
That would be a good, the two of us.
Okay.
Is that for diversity?
Yes.
And who did we have on the Wellness?
Mrs. Dobus was the board.
Yeah.
Or breakdown of the, and Mr..
Spicuzza, right?
Spicuzza.
Spicuzza, the two of them.
Okay.
I'll step in for the Wellness.
Good thing it was named. What does that one entail? No, no, he was sitting right there.
Darren just said he.
Okay.
Do you want to be backup?
Depending on what it entails potentially.
I can back him up.
Okay, all you.
You guys are all taking a load here. And then there was another one that we had discussed a while back. We had, used to have a Safety slash Alice Committee, and especially with some of the things, you know, what happened in Michigan and things like that. I think the previous superintendent disbanded that committee. And we should probably have a little discussion, do we want to restart that committee? I think, Mr. Modrak, you led that.
Yeah, the historical background is, Mrs. Rose was the superintendent at the time, and myself is the school resource officer and the school police officer of the district. She approached me to form this committee, and it was a very good committee for the fact that we included administrators, staff, parents, and we just reviewed the things that we were doing to make our schools as safe as possible. And there was a lot of good things that came out of that, as one thing would be is the support of Alice training throughout the whole district, which we had did multiple training sessions for our staff and our students over this five years that I was in charge of security. And in light of what kind of took place in Michigan, I think the committee has a good foundation to start again, so we can work with central administration and review all things that are going on to make sure, doing the best we possibly can to keep our staff and students safe, so.
And part of that committee was, I know, Gail. Part of that committee was, I know, Gail, you also sat on, I sat on it and tried to continue that, you had, I think you had stepped away, and I know Jim had, tried to committee that, continue that committee with the help of another parent that was on the committee, and several teachers that, you know, have not technically been certified again in the ALIS training, which is a major concern to me on the safety, security, and policy end of everything, that we have not certified our teachers again in ALIS training, or teach the, train the trainers, have not been done either. So I would really like to see this committee back. I had said I'd backed Jim up on it and go back to trying to set this committee up with all of the stakeholders that need to happen, because I'm very concerned. I mean, I got into this, I was graduating from law school when Columbine happened. It changed my world in juvenile law, and it's a concern all the way around.
Any opposition or any questions about starting that committee? I guess, Dr. Walsh, have you, in previous districts you've been at, have you had a similar committee to that also?
Yeah, in fact, I think it's pretty much a standard operating procedure for schools. I don't know that I've worked in a district where the board participated at that level, but, so yes, I'm familiar with it, and we can resurrect it. And, you know, the work that, and the conversation go on at the building levels through our threat assessment teams and student assistance teams, so it's, it really hasn't gone away, the conversation, the focus, the efforts. This will just sort of shift the conversation.
Sure.
And again, Doc, and please, I know the work is going on, like you said. I just think it's the approach that we had from this level coming down, I think it may have been lacking before you got here. And we're just trying to re-resurrect that, and then again, just keeping, like Kim said, all the stakeholders involved, so. Things have been done these last two or three years, we know that. There's been improvements in security and increase from the school, increase in the school police force to even different door safety mechanisms, mechanisms that were purchased. It's just that getting all the stakeholders involved, that's all.
Okay.
And the concern is the training that wasn't, it was not going on for the staff as much. And the other thing was, I mean, we got the buckets in there that, you know, the kids can stay in the room for hours if they have to barricade. We were able to move a lot, but when the question came up of where is it going next, it was disbanded. So.
So, Kim, are you interested in?
Yes.
It was a pretty low frequency before.
Yeah, it was like once a quarter, it was not.
We were, by her mandate, Mrs. Rose, it was once a quarter.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'm always interested, and I know Gail was another participant, but too, this may be the committee we have three of us on, if that's okay.
So I think this list is kind of the extended committee list versus, we have a few other committees that are more the operational committees that we review topics during each of the board meetings. Any others, that, any other committees that fall on this list? Dr. Walsh, anything you can think of?
No.
Okay. So then, when we look at the operational committees, and can we address this in this topic also? This is kind of a discussion topic, I'd just like to extend it, just so we can get some clarity, plus we have a business meeting next Tuesday, right? So, so in the operational committees, we have five of them. We have curriculum, personnel, policy, finance, and facilities, all those appear on the agenda, and we have voting items under each one of those topics every meeting. So, for this last year, Vince Scalzo was curriculum, Darren McGregor was personnel, Ms. Turner was policy, I was finance, Russ Picusa was facilities. So, I would recommend that, you know, the people who are in those positions could give them the opportunity to do, you know, continue in those positions. So, you know, Vince, if you're.
Yes, I would, I would like to continue with curriculum.
Okay.
Thank you.
Darren?
Yes, I'll continue on our personnel.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll continue with policy.
Okay. And, you know, finance is an area where I would like to step away from a little bit, and, you know, of course, I can help provide a lot of support. I gotta tell you, finance has become so easy with Mr. McCoslin in place, okay? He's an excellent business manager, and so the job got really easy when he came on board. Are anybody interested in working on the finance committee?
Yep, I'm happy to take finance.
Are you?
Yep.
Yeah? Okay. Anybody else want to fight Dan for that? Okay, fantastic, thank you, Dan. Facilities, we had Russ. Facility is gonna be a huge, busy, busy committee for us over the next couple of years. Any, I'll take, let's talk about who's interested in it.
I'd be interested in it, if it's okay.
Actually, I think you'd do fantastic in it, because you know the district really well, and, you know, you've worked at the district and in the municipality, so I, if there's no objections, I think Jim would be fantastic at that, so, okay. Let's go with those appointments then, and then as we get to the meetings next week, you know, all of you five will own those agenda items, and you will make the motions to approve those items, and, you know, just make sure you understand those topics, and that's how we'll run it. There, oftentimes, there's a few other, there's like an other, and so we kind of handle those randomly, and assign those to, for people to make motions as, as they appear on the agenda, so. Okay, well, I think that's a great group, I think we're ready to roll forward, so, thank you, that was very quick and painless. Let's go back to the main agenda then, we are at the point of public comments. Do we have people?
There are no public comments at this time, unless someone of our people in the audience want to make comment. Good.
Okay. Any board comments?
I just want to welcome everyone, Buffy, Gail, Dan, and Sharon. You'll learn a lot over the next six months. And look forward to working with all of you and the different committees and/or strategic planning that's still going on, so, welcome.
Thanks.
I would also like to welcome everyone. I think it's an exciting time, we have a strategic plan in place, and now each month, as we continue to vote, we can make sure that we are using that as our guide, and I'm looking forward to having discussions with all of you. Welcome, again.
Yes, definitely welcome. You guys are coming at a, you know, pretty tough time during COVID and stuff like that, but I think over the last two years, and especially since Dr. Walsh came on board, a lot of ducks started falling in place, and so it's exciting. We've, you know, we've assembled a great admin team, we've done some major moves at the high school, for example, that I think is gonna really pay off, so, welcome and congratulations.
Also, welcome to all of you, to the board, and I'm also excited to have you all here. You know, I've got to know most of you prior to this, and then Dan just recently. And so I think we're on exciting times, and you guys will bring a lot of good things to the table, and we'll be able to keep this district moving in a good forward direction here that we're all hoping to attain, especially with the leadership we have in place right now. So, again, welcome.
Yeah, thank you all for the welcome, thank you, Dr. Walsh, for kind of getting us onboarded initially, and excited to get started.
And thank you so much, I appreciate it. So very, very excited to be here and to start, and I want to make sure, since I have the chance, to thank the outgoing board members for all of their time and the work that they put into helping our community and working towards the betterment of our children, and thank all of you, very excited and looking forward to it. Thank you.
Kayla and Buffy, you want to say hi?
No, thanks.
It's all been said, and we can't say anymore. I think, I'm excited to get started, I'm looking forward to learning and growing and great things for the district, so.
That's great, yeah, welcome, all of you. Since I'm, which is kind of shocking, you know, I've been on six years, and I've got the most tenure on this board, which this board has never been composed of such a low tenure, but I think we got a great group of people, I'm excited to work with all of you. When we look over the last two years, I think that the board has really made a great transformation from managing the school district to governing. And there's a huge difference between, when you look at the role of boards, the difference between managerial activities and governance activities. And we should be focused on governance, the long range, the direction of where we're going, providing, you know, guidance, tough questions to administration, but over the last two years, we hired, I think, a fantastic leadership team across the board. They're the experts on the details of running the school, not us, but we can ask good questions, and we can be thinking about the future, and we can be thinking about what our community wants, what are those, what are the priorities of our community, and represent those priorities. So, I think we've gone through just a great transformation on the board in a short period of time to playing the role that we're supposed to play, so I'm excited to continue doing that, so. So, welcome, all of you. Any other comments? Okay, is it a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed?